In the corner, Todd.
In the corner, which corner do you want me in?
Either one.
Go on. What was the break?
I'll tell you when we can hear you.
Neither one.
Face the wall.
Make sure that I can take.
Try and breathe.
Okay, we are live with the Marion County Finance Committee in a virtual meeting. This is Sunday, June 4th. 11:30 and in the room is Stephanie Carlson, Annette Christie William-Wolfe, Doug James, and Todd Johnson. And so we're going to go ahead and have the Stephanie Leroux call, please. Commissioner Yarborough.
Present.
Commissioner Harrison.
Present.
Commissioner Hankman.
Here.
And Commissioner Scott.
Here.
We do have a quorum. Our com- our whole committee is here. You may start. Annette, um...
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. We're, uh, we're going to have a discussion about the retiring healthcare. And I'll turn that over to the administrator.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I'm going to turn it over for Doug for most of the heavy numbers and stuff for you. But I just want to refresh the, the committee's memory. We have a number of public safety contracts throughout the county. The biggest ones are New Buffalo Township and Niles Township. And we also have some contracts for officers in, in schools. And we have Water Valley Township. Water Valley Township is the oldest contract. But as we entered into the more, the later contracts, starting with Niles Township and New Buffalo, we put in an admin fee of 10% on those contracts. So that whatever the contract is, they pay us ex- to break the sheriff even. We put in an extra 10% because we're responsible for picking up the vehicles and equipment and training the, you know, things that cannot be itemized came out of that 10%. Obviously, just vehicles alone oftentimes pretty much dominated that amount. So we weren't making any money. In fact, the entire premise of providing public safety contracts to local units was based that it would be a break even for the county. But the county would have some advantage in that we would have more sworn officers out there if we had to. But they were, we're supposed to have a financially break even situation. Several years ago, and some of you might remember the discussions we had with the sheriff, is that the one thing that has been kind of a problem has been retiring healthcare for the public safety officers. As you know, our OPEB, retiring healthcare, we're paying out the nose for that. But the sheriff had took a position that he will not charge the local units for that as a cost of doing business, a cost incorporated into their contracts, because he said they, they will refuse to pay that. That will drive them out of the contract business. Well, Doug just put some numbers together this week because we've found, discovered quite a hole in our healthcare fund. And I'm going to turn it over to him to explain the numbers to you. But we've came to the conclusion that much of that hole could be attributed to subsidizing retiree healthcare on these contracts. In other words, what was supposed to be break even is in effect being subsidized by the public so that we can run these public safety contracts. And we do have a proposed solution, but I'm going to let Doug take it away.
Okay. I'm going to drop this down so I can talk. What I've got, what I've given you is each of commissioners would be about a three-page presentation. Ah, there it is, great. This gives you a look of where, at where we project the year to, this coming year to end based upon our experience with the, with the healthcare fund. Uh, right now, this last year, we ended the year with $616,000 in fund balance. Uh, that included, that was net of a transfer in, a year-end appropriation of $400,000. So if we hadn't done that, we would have been closer around $200,000. Uh, what we should be maintaining in this fund is somewhere in the area of two, between $2 and $3 million, which would be a 60-day, um, 60 days worth of expenses. Um, if you use that as your target. What we, what we did is took a look and then projected forward from there as to where we think we're going to end in 2020. And right now, based upon the numbers that we put together, we would estimate that we will be in a deficit position of about $448,000. Now, that excludes, um, the, uh, a, at, the originally budgeted and estimated drug rebate. We get about $660,000 a year. So if we do get that this year, that would take us above water about $200,000, which is way too close for us. Um, if you go to the next page, this gives you an idea if you look at it from a health insurance perspective. These would be the healthcare premiums that we would be paying to Blue Cross Blue Shield on a weekly basis. And we've separated it out by quarter for you. So you can see as you go through the course of time uh, what we are experiencing with what we project to experience in the fourth quarter of 2020. Uh, you can see, uh, that the, if I can, that solid black line represents the budget. Uh, we budget about $286,000 per week in costs. Um, the, through the third quarter, which we, we firmed up, we know our third quarter payments are going to be based upon Blue Cross's billing to us. We will be paying $289,000 per week through the third quarter. And we've attempted to project what we believe the fourth quarter will be, which is about $280,000. So we continue to see pressure on that. Okay, that it does not include the retiree healthcare that Bill mentioned a little bit ago. It has to do with the contracts. Um, if you go to the next page over, which is the last page, this represents the amount of retiree healthcare for the contracts that are charged to this fund. You can see 162,000 in 2018, 1959,000. And we're seeing a spike going for 2020. Part of that we anticipated due to the, the change in the, in the OPEB funding rate. Uh, however, to date, if I look at this from that perspective, to date, we've paid about $603,000 out of this fund in order to, to defray the contract OPEB healthcare cost. Okay, uh, so I guess from, from that perspective, we're, we're presenting this to you. We're continuing to review it. We're can, we will be looking at it again once we have the rates for the fourth quarter uh, and come back to you at that point. However, we do need to, uh, really take a look at what actions need to be taken in order to make sure that this fund is properly sustained going forward. Um, one of the actions we talked about was that if we aren't able to charge the OPEB con- the OPEB to the contracts, should that then pay, be paid by the sheriff in some way. And I present that to you this morning as, as one option that would assist a little bit with this fund. It doesn't solve everything, but it does help. Okay?
Doug, on the prior year,
Mm-hmm.
to looking at the chart with the payments. So does that, does that include the drug rebate dollars?
That does not.
Okay, so it's...
This is just pure payments that are going out to Blue Cross.
Okay.
Each week. They, they, they set a weekly rate for us.
Well, may I, may I ask, um, Doug, the, explain to us about the drug dollar that go. That's the millions that the sheriff department gets?
The, the, no, no, that's completely, this is something completely different.
Okay, where does that, what is that drug money? What is it you're talking about?
We receive a rebate and I have to, I have to have a conversation with, um, the benefits group as to just how that, we arrive at that.
Your full purchase.
Yeah, it's Medicaid. I think it's coming from Medicaid.
Okay.
Oh, okay, okay. And so it's our money to you, we don't have to request it from the sheriff's budget or just, you know, how do we...
Well, not, not the $660,000.
Right.
It all fits how Medicaid chooses to reimburse us. So I, I don't, didn't even want to really enter into that part of it. Um, that we would be, if we get to 660, we're neutral year over year. The question is, what do we do to stop the decline that we're seeing here?
Okay.
If you remember, we, we pay OPEB based on what the actuary tells us.
Yes.
And that's, and that's why there's somewhat of a, we, we made some, uh, assumption changes a year ago. They kicked in at the beginning of this year. That's one of the reasons why we went from 160,000 a year to, what is it now, 280?
Yeah.
Now, there's four components of that, but generally, that's why it kicked it up. This is really a philosophical question that we've kind of dealt with for several years and never resolved. And that is, should the county, through either, through the general fund or through its public safety village, be subsidizing contracts to local units? And what we've got with the numbers that Doug has presented is that this year, we predict that we will be subsidizing local unit public safety contracts in tune to $280,000. But because we're subsidizing them, it is dragging the entire healthcare fund down to a dangerously low level when we should be carrying the fund balance. But I have talked to sheriff about this. Uh, his position remains the same. The local units will not pay it if we insist that they pick up the OPEB across of the officers. Now, remember, these are, when I say officers, it may not be the specific officer on the contract. It is all officers. We're paying them generally across the board. And we, so that all officers are, are being assessed this. But we're paying it ourselves, but it's, it's how it's calculated.
Uh-huh.
Uh, but we're, it's a philosophical question is, should the public be subsidizing individual local municipality contracts to the tune of $280,000 in 2020? That's a long-term issue. These contracts, most of these contracts are on automatic rollovers. So, you know, it isn't like we can, I mean, we could... The board could tell the sheriff to renegotiate the contracts and have the local units pick this up. I can imagine that would not be well received either by the locals or by the sheriff. Could cost us some contracts. Uh, I'm, I'm not, for what it's worth, I've never been emotionally tied to them with the understanding they were break even contracts. And the upside to the county was we had more people uniform.
Yeah.
But, but again, should we be subsidizing? Our solution, and I told, I informed the sheriff that this was the approach we wanted to take, is that, as Doug said, it was over $600,000 over three years. We wanted to just go back one year, which put us at, what, $450,000 essentially? For the 280 plus last year, 2019, uh, amount. And we've got sufficient fund balance in the public safety village, uh, an unbudgeted fund balance in the public safety village to cover that $450,000.
Okay.
We obviously need your approval to make that kind of movement of 450 out of public safety and putting it in the healthcare fund. But that would be, that would be putting us in the position to be pretty much break even. And then if we get that Medicaid rebate of $600,000, we'll have a little bit of surplus going into year end. So by solving the OPEB problem in this manner, we believe that we are solving the healthcare problem for this year. I want to point out that it's a Band-Aid, not a permanent fix.
And it's going to be up there again next year? This is something we'll have to deal with each year?
Yes, as long as we have those contracts established the way they are, it's going to be a problem.
Yes.
And I understand why the local units don't want to pay it. They're saying, "Well, retiree healthcare, OPEB, is been done away with to our new people coming on board." We don't give new people retiree healthcare at all. But as you know, over the years, the sheriff's department has had a wonderful retiree healthcare benefit that just is almost staggering in the, in what has been given away at the bargaining table. And so the local unit's position is, "Well, your old, your senior officers are going to benefit from this, not the new young guy that you just put into our contract because he's straight out of the academy." So why should we have to pay for that? And the reality is, the alternative is so complicated. We'd have to do an actuarial study on each officer. And then every time the officer changed, we'd have to do it again. So we just apply it across the board as a single figure.
Yeah.
Uh, question. Go ahead, John.
Doug?
Bill, philosophically, um, what is, what do the optics look like if you are using, if you are using that fund to fix this even in a Band-Aid fashion? It, I mean, those optics philosophically aren't good either to use, to use that either, I would think. I mean, it's, it's a, it's not like a Band-Aid and a fix, but, um, I mean, philosophically, what does that look like if we do that now?
Well, the argument can be made that it is the sheriff picking up the tab for his contracts from within the public safety monies of the county. That's still not a great optic because that village is paid for by everybody across the county. But if, if that is the manner in which we proceed for, you know, forward, I mean, we could fix the problem if we want to do it on an annual basis. We're not proposing that right now. But at least we could say that in return for the sheriff having another 15 officers, and that's just a, a guess, but 15 officers that he has trained, that are under his control, that are in uniform and properly equipped with vehicles, that we could call on to respond to an emergency somewhere in the county, there is a certain amount of value having that reservoir, that reserve of officers be available like that. It's a little, but it's not a great optic. But it's a better optic than if we try to put $450,000 of general fund money into subsidizing these contracts. I think that would be the worst optic.
How many contracts?
Well, the big ones are Water Valley, Niles Township, New Buffalo Township. And then you have like the Buffalo schools we got out there. I think the Harvard School contract is now going away.
And we do, we do have, we do have, I think, a, a officer in Boys and Girls Club. Maybe we have two. I know, I've, I've seen this. It's the sheriff's department.
Yeah, the, uh, you're, you're right about that, Commissioner. Uh, the one that, the one that has no longer continued, I think, is the one that was in the school with the state police officer.
Uh.
I think that's the contract that's no longer...
Oh, all right. And, and, and what this is really about, we don't have an overabundance of officers out there in those communities. But it's about the people that are retired. Is that what's running this, these dollars up?
Well, they're the ones, you might say, that are benefiting from this promise of a, of a very, very generous retiree healthcare situation.
Okay.
Which is, again, it's gone away. We don't have it anymore, but we still are paying the debt for it.
Yes.
Oh, Bill?
Oh.
Bill, I got one que- I got one question. Uh, we're charging a 10% admin fee. Can it be construed in any different way that, that admin fee has to go up to 15% to help offset some of our costs? And is that maybe the way to help start this? Because you can't do, it, it can't be a pixel automatically all at one because I, I agree, the local units are never going to go for it. But if they were to get an increased admin fee from the county, uh, that would maybe start us on the right road? I don't know.
You're right. And that's something that the, that could certainly be considered by the board. I brought up with the sheriff in my conversation with him that maybe the solution is just to double the admin fee to 20%. And, you know, it's not an exact science, but it'll help.
Right.
Uh, but that, but he, he made it sound like the, the contracts are so on an edge that if we raise them at all, we'll lose the contracts. Now, I have to confess to you that I'm the wrong guy to use that argument because I'm not in love with them anyway. I think, you know, they're, they're okay. They're nice, you know? But they got to be a break even in my mind. It's always been that way. But in the sheriff's mind, he'll lose the contracts if we raise the cost up. Now, we didn't talk about a 5% increase. I had thrown out an additional 10%.
Yeah, I didn't, no, I, but I just thought maybe a gradual step increase in that, uh, and the admin fee would maybe start us on the right path. I mean, it's not going to be a, a solvball, but...
And that's why I mentioned that these contracts, these major contracts are on automatic rollovers. So you'd literally have to, the board would have to tell the sheriff, "We want you to renegoti- to give notice of ending the contract at this point in time, renegotiating it to whatever these parameters are, and then bring it back for renewal." Because something has to be done to stop the contract, otherwise it just keeps rolling over at the 10%. To change that, we'd need a new contract.
But in, in the Buffalo Township, as a matter of fact, um, and, and they have money for their contracts, you know, for their police protection. Um, but I don't believe the sheriff is going to lose that contract, um, you know, because of an increase in admin fee. Because my first thing is, who's going to take that over? That, that's the key. Who would take that over? There's no department there. New Buffalo wasn't going to be able to. And if they are, they're going to have to charge because they're going to have to hire staff and everything. So I, I don't know whether I think that is honestly true. I don't know about Niles or the Water Valley, but I just, I know the Buffalo link. And I'm like, "Yeah, I don't think that." Um, but...
Well, we came in this morning with the hope that we could get your support for this Band-Aid of taking $450,000 of public safety village fund balance, unbudgeted, uncommitted, and applying it right now to solve this immediate problem we've got. And then that would open the doors up as you go into the 2021 budget cycle. Anytime between now and then to work with the sheriff and say, "Sheriff, I think we need a little more money on these contracts," or however else you want to see. That's a longer term fix. Or you just say, "Sheriff, from here on out, whether you like it or not, your public safety village is going to have to have a little piece of the pie taken over to cover this OPEB that you don't want to cover in any other manner." And then we begin to budget it, which we, out of the public safety village, which it doesn't really have the room for that. Something would have to give somewhere to take another $250,000 out. But at least, at least that would be a fix moving forward so that in three years, you're not back there looking at a, at another hole.
And, and that's what I want...
And legally, we're allowed to do that?
To do what?
To take it from the public safety village?
Sure, you have the authority to move between funds all you want.
All right.
It's, it is for public safety.
All right.
They can have a hard time making a case of it, isn't it?
Sure, we'll be happy, but that's, that's not working, right?
He knows it's coming, but he will not be happy.
Yeah.
It certainly seems lucid to me to, the, the, um, the point that you guys have come to. But it also seems lucid to me to have this very same conversation with the same, um, question marks, with these same talking points to the local communities, um, in the next short period of time to say, "These are the realities of what it's going to take us to continue this contract." And to have that conversation with the community. And I think you're assuming far too much to Ezra's point if, if, um, it's not absolutely known that the community will end the contract based on the increase if the argument is lucid and sound. And so it would seem like the steps that you're trying to take to solve this with the, the Band-Aid, if you will, but then not forgetting about what next steps are. And that those next steps being that you're going to have to have a conversation with those people about changing the contracts to cover these costs in the future, it certainly seems lucid to me, so...
Thank you. Um, I would like to say, on the ballot in August, is the renewal of the village for public safety?
Yes, ma'am.
Administrator Wolf. And how, how many years is that? Three or four?
Oh, that'll be a four-year village.
And we did not increase it, did we?
No, we left them all alone.
Right. So that's what I think we need to go in with this. Because if I was a community and the sheriff's department right now, the contract, they do all the paperwork, all the payrolls, all the hours, how can you afford to take that on yourself? You know, I would, I would hope that they would realize the value of it.
Well, I agree with that. I hope they do recognize the value. And I, I hate to say that they're between a rock and a hard spot, but it costs a lot of money to take a department of, that doesn't exist and completely build the thing up from the ground.
Or they go to combining with another unit of the government that's adjacent to it. So that's...
And maybe that's not a negative result.
I mean, yes, they still have, from the county's perspective, more sworn officers in the county. So, and there's nothing to know that, I mean, they're not gang up to us in the future on this, anyway.
Oh, no, they could cancel us out anytime they wanted to. It's, it's pretty open. I think there's a six-month clause in it.
What do you want?
I guess...
What do you want some, what, what, what are we supposed to be coming to the board with?
Well, this can be done by the finance committee, according to our, right, Doug? Movement between funds. Because we're just moving money between county funds.
Okay.
And in this case, it's between the public safety village and the healthcare fund, correct if I'm wrong. And Doug, am I right that the, the hard number that we want to move is... Have you totaled that up? Like, 159, 531 plus 281, 162, is that the...
Yeah, that we're talking about.
Do you have a total of those two by any chance?
No.
Okay, hang on a second. I'm going to give you a, a...
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to just round it a little bit. Madam Chair, we would like, we would like permission to move $441,000 out of the public safety village into the healthcare fund. Is that accurate, Doug?
Yeah.
And will you still apply for the $600,000 from Medicaid or wherever you said?
Oh, that, that'll be all later in the year. That'll be a separate. That's an automatic rebate that goes right into that fund.
Okay, okay. What, what say you other board, other, uh, committee members?
Um, maybe if, if this is, uh, this is what we want to do, I'd like to make a motion, um, to allow the administrator to move $441,000 from the public safety village to the, um, healthcare self-insurance fund. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. May I have a support, please?
Support. That's Commissioner Harrison.
Thank you. It's been properly moved and supported. Any further discussion or anything else? When will this happen? Right away?
You'll do it pretty quick, won't you, Doug?
By 10:30.
Yeah, by 10:30.
A different...
Yeah, but again, this doesn't require full board approvals. Finance committee, you can authorize movement between funds like this.
All right. I'm fine with that. Um, and what I will say is, they all received that chart, and it was regarding public safety, uh, in the, our, our public safety contracts with communities.
Yes.
And to bring it up, the finance committee has made the, what, what did it do? Allow?
You've authorized the transfer
Authorized.
of $441,000 from the public safety village fund balance to the healthcare fund.
Self-insurance.
Self-insurance.
Thank you. Thank you. That's why I want to make it tight and, and a little... So all those in favor, would you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Commissioner Yarborough?
Yes.
Commissioner Harrison?
Yes.
Commissioner Hankman?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Hickman, did you have a question?
Well, just very quickly, I just wanted to find out, being that it is the Public Safety Fund, does the sheriff, do you have any knowledge of the fact that he may have earmarkings for that, part of that fund somewhere else in his budget to fill some holes?
No, this is actually uncommitted fund balance.
All right.
It could be used for other things. If we reopen the budget, we can spend it in other ways, obviously, but, but that's, that's the calculation of where we are right now of that fund balance.
Fund balance means that it's, it's, it's like a savings account from other previous years collected?
It's surplus, and Doug, you might be able to explain this better, but we found that after we split the Public Safety, you'd be able to jump to places like Narcotics, they were accumulating pretty hefty fund balances, is that correct?
Yes.
They weren't spending all the money we were giving them, so when we determined that they have fund balances there in this budget, we yanked them back in and said, hey, you know, why should we keep giving you more? Technically, did we do that, or did we just say, start spending your fund balance, we're not gonna give you more?
No, we yanked it back in 2019.
So we literally yanked some of their funds, not all of it, but some of it back in.
Okay.
Into the village fund, yeah.
That's good. Oh, that's better, yeah.
Um, I have a question. What happens, what happens to the remainder of what's in the Public Safety Fund?
At this point, it would roll over into next year. It could be used if we have a crisis to use it in, I mean, it's there. So it's, it's available, much like it is here, but in the absence of coming back to you saying, here's what we're gonna do with it, it's just gonna sit there like any other fund balance.
Okay.
That's good, that's better.
I just, I think we need to reiterate the fact that this is a Band-Aid, and so you're gonna have to do what you need to do to take a step, fix this going, and I don't know that it has to be, it's gonna have to be dealt with one way or the other, you have to find a way to, to either make the contract pay, or, the realities have to be dealt with, I guess.
And, and, thank you, Commissioner Hickman, and that's what I think about, is that whoever's over the, the sheriff, you know, that department, we need to go back in and put together something to approach those communities. That's what I think, this year.
Well, it's plenty of time this year to renegotiate something for next budget year, so...
Yeah, and don't be, and don't be scared, you know, it's a fact. What, what's next?
Yeah, we have a couple other items that we'd like to discuss with you, that's why Todd Johnson's to my left.
Okay.
As I said in the email I sent to you, he's, I, about a week ago, I went out and said, hey, well, I alerted the chair and, and, actually, the question was, we needed to spend, we thought we're gonna have to spend $200,000 to replace an HVAC at the South County Courthouse.
Yeah.
The, it has since come back that we think that there's a cheaper option, and I'm gonna turn it over to Todd to explain the cheaper option. I hate talking about Band-Aids, the reality is, those units down there are 16 years old, they're gonna need to be replaced at some point, but Todd, why don't you take it from there? And talk about, we have some more matters after this, so if you wanna keep moving.
You have two options. Can I hear?
What? I'm like... Yeah, there's, there's, I don't know if there's a real clear answer to the issue we have down there. We did look at one, replacing the coil within the unit, and there, there's two coils in the unit. One, 50% of this is currently working. That coil has been repaired once before, but it is working. So we looked at two options, replacing the coil, the one that's bad, and to also replace the entire unit. The entire unit, to replace that one, we initially just right off the top of our head, 200 grand. It's come back, and when we tightened it up, it was about 130,000 dollars. The problem with this is, there's a seven-week leave time on actually getting that equipment on-site, which would mean we'd have to somehow try and milk that 50% coil that has already been repaired out that seven weeks. At this point, it's, it's easier to do, because we don't have people in the building, they're not, you know, there's not a real load on that, that piece of equipment. To replace the coil, we're about just under 14 grand. And the unit is 16 years old, so it is an R22 gas type machine, which is not illegal for us to, to replace, but they are phasing this out. We can get it, there'll be an additional, I think it was, the highest one we found, I think it was like 2,500, which would be just for the R22 gas. If we went through the actual person that was installing it, or whatever company, it would, it would have, it'd be higher than that, so it's better for us to purchase the gas on our own.
And that explains the $20,000 number I put in the email, that's the, that's the coil plus the R22.
Right, right. Now, that is, you know, it'll get us up and running, we can't say, you know, the second coil is 16 years old, it's been replaced, it's been repaired several times, but it is working. So it's kind of a coin toss of, you know, replace a coil, hollow ring, get out this machine. And we're getting, we're getting pretty good at, with all our PMs and that, that we do, we can milk it the best we can. I mean, we're gonna get everything we can out. If, if, if we went with replacing the whole unit, which is probably, I mean, if we look at it, that's what we should do, from the EPA suggestions with replacing the R22, if it is financially feasible to do, they like us to replace those to the R22 gas. But in the situation that we're in, we're relying on half a, you know, half a machine with a coil that's 16-year-old, that has been repaired several times, to carry this load until that machine comes out. And this is all a new part of, of South County. So it's, it's, you know, all the sheriff's department courtrooms, all the new parts, so...
So we're back here with you this morning, it's really an emergency repair that needs to be done. We started at a 200-grand figure, I'm here to correct that down to, what, 130,000?
Right, right.
It could be done for 130,000 for a complete replacement, but that takes seven weeks waiting, and we're getting into hot time of the year. On the other hand, for what we believe to be well under $20,000, we can replace a coil and, and milk this thing for a couple more years, but you gotta understand, sometimes this whole unit's gonna have to replace, be replaced in the foreseeable future, I'm guessing.
Right, right.
It's 16 years old. So what we're asking the board to do, or the committee to do, is simply kind of advise us as whether you wanna, I hate to use Band-Aid again, but we can, we can, for 20 grand, we can buy ourselves some time, or we can jump in at the 130,000, and, and we will be able to find the 130,000 in the capital improvement fund, but, but we don't really have seven weeks to wait, to be honest.
So the risk is, in the seven weeks, you decide to go in a new unit, and then during the seven weeks, the unit fails completely?
It's gonna get more. It's gonna get more. And the other two, as far as, you know, putting the gamble out there, if we put a new coil in there, new coil is probably three, five days out, which train unit, they got us in on a shelf, they're ready to go.
When I sent the message out last week, about 200,000, we didn't even know that we were going to have an option to get a replacement coil from that.
Yeah.
We thought it might have to be fabricated, but it turns out it isn't.
No, I'd say, yeah, it's an OEM type piece of equipment. Most of the R22 stuff, nobody's manufacturing anything. It's what's left on the shelf is what we got, including the gas. Only gas that's available is what was produced several years ago, or what's reclaimed from the units that...
Are there any other parts of that that might fail?
Well, no, I mean, the other parts, I mean, because it's in the area, you're gonna have, you can have motor's belts, that stuff, worst-case scenario, the other coil goes, okay, so, you know, R20. But we still have a new coil that will carry it for part of that coming in, so that, worst-case scenario, it's, you know, we have 40 grand into this, or, you know, we paid 130, and we gamble on whether or not we can keep this, this building suitable until it shows up.
And if you're wondering, staff recommendation is to go with the fix, that just gets the thing done in a week, so we're ready for the hot weather and take our chances, but it's, it's a question, you know, it's a question worthy of this committee's decisions.
Well, I think that, without a doubt, that you're, get it fixed, if it can fix, there you, there you, that you need it for, be very prudent, and it's the thing to do at this point in time to get it repaired, and then, you know, discussion once again should take place on a newer unit, if there's a build-out time on it to get that, get, you know, make a plan for that, and then put that into a longer-range thing, but, but absolutely the coil's the way to go here.
Okay. And, and it's, but, it's working now? It's working now?
No, it's, it's working at 50% right now.
Okay, all right. I, I, I think, just a moment, in a short period of time, you ought to have found out a lot, because I just read this last week, what, Thursday, Friday?
Well, it is an emergency, Commissioner, I mean, this is, this is serious, and we have to do something, or we're gonna have a real problem down there at the South County Courthouse, and we're gonna get to 85 degrees consistently.
I understand, and we just put a boiler in, that was for what? For hot water, for heat, for...
Right. Yeah, that was about a $36,000 job.
Yes, I would, I would go with repairing it. Commissioner Scott, you had something to say?
Yeah, you said there are two coils, one's at 50.
No, 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 the machine, the coil was at 50.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I was gonna say, if we're replacing one coil, then we're at a good, we're at 75, you know, and, and what's gonna say that, and, once we put that new coil in, you know just as well as I do in construction, you put in, you got two parts, you put a brand-new one in, it...
It's gonna put stress on it.
It, it, it does put stress on the older one, and if that's the case, so you're in actuality, there is the distinct possibility that it would be $40,000 to replace both coils as, as we wait to replace it. Now, have any of these units been worked into the, the capital for the years coming?
Yeah, you know, we, of course, you know, we end up pushing some of these off, but I believe that unit is in there, I think the boilers are, were in there too, it just came to a point where they're down, we gotta go now. And we thought, we had kind of understanding that, you know, trying to make things work, that, you know, we could push this, but be aware that it could go down, it could happen in there.
I mean, I, I don't think we have a choice but to go and replace the coil. I just want everybody to know that we have to be aware, do you understand what I'm saying? That we could put that new coil in, and a week later, the other coil goes out, so everybody needs to be aware of that, because that can happen very easily, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, the new, the new coil will be free-flowing, it's gonna, it's gonna handle whatever pressure it can, but it will still, because it's in series with the other coil, and that, that coil, 16-years-old, as much as we try and keep those coils clean with, you know, chemicals and actors, build-up, there is some resistance in there, and the water is gonna go somewhere, and if it can't find a spot, it, it will make one.
All right, that was my only point.
Right, when I said that, I said it didn't sound right. I believe I have the guidance from the committee I was looking for, so as an emergency, we will move ahead and just get it done.
Okay.
If I could bring up the last topic I really wanted to touch on with the committee, it's the Pearson bid. As you know, I'd hoped to have the 1839 courthouse painted by this time. It was all bid last year so that we could go, but of course, COVID kinda set in and sent us back. But before we could, before we could move on to the painting, now remember, last year it was the big window project, $220,000 in new windows, to get that out of the way. This year was going to be the painting, and the bids came in, I think, at 57, 58,000, which was underbid.
For?
For the painting.
Uh, no, actually, we've got, the, the fund was 80 grand to start with, and I think we got 46 available, so it's like 34, 35.
Leftover. But the, the bid on the painting is what I was saying.
On the painting, I think 31, 32,000.
Well, all right, the bid on the painting came in much lower than we expected, but in order to paint it, we had to go back and get a power washed, and then have an exam to what kind of woodwork needs to be repaired, and there's, where we are today is, we are disappointed to find out from Pearson that they think it's gonna take 40 grand to get the woodwork fixed. Now, this is a tough one, 40 grand typically require going out for bid, but if somebody has an idea of how you bid out replacing rotten wood, and knowing that you're gonna have a quality project at the outside, you know, give me 10 grand and 14 buckets of spackling, and I'll make that place look really good, but it won't last for more than a year. And I, so it's an element of, we have Pearson saying not to exceed for you, we'll get your wood in order, we trust Pearson, they're local, they're not going anywhere, but it was not bid out, but it is the next necessary step before we paint that to get the woodwork So there is the dilemma.
Commissioners, you have any thought?
I'd say we go ahead and fix the wood, and then get a paint in.
Who's talking?
That's Commissioner Harrison. And you can remember, the overall project is very close to what we thought it was going to be. I mean, not exactly, but it's in the ballpark, because the painting came in cheaper, but, but it's still a question of, of process.
This is Commissioner Scott, I have a question. This in itself doesn't really constitute an emergency, because what we're doing is, we're just holding up the painting to replace the rotten wood. So my question is, why is it not being bid to give that opportunity to find out whether or not it could be done cheaper? I mean, what is the rush to do this just to get paint out before the end of the year? I, I don't know, I just don't understand why we couldn't bid it out.
It wasn't, it wasn't so much as, as, as far as bidding it out, it was how to. We don't have anything that's really, you know, how do we get the bidders on the same page, apples for apples, you know, what did Pearson see, what did everybody else see? Pearson had the, which, which we don't have, we had, we had rented the lift, which they used the lift after we did the power wash, which would require the bidders to have a lift, or we have a lift available, so that they could, because most of it's up high on the, on the heaves up there, so it's, it's not so much not wanting to bid it out, it's, it's how, how do we get everybody on the same page? From the quote you can see that, that Pearson gave, it's not itemized, it's not saying per wood, you know, per section this year, so we don't know, you know, we could get that bid back that comes to 10,000, that might, you know, might be everything, it might not, we don't know how to gauge that. And that, that's where, that's where we're at, it's not that, I, if we bid it out, I have, I have no issue with it, I just don't know how to write the specs for it, to be fair to everybody.
You won't know what we're bidding.
I just, and, and we've discussed this before, I am just not a fan of not bidding things, because I like to keep people honest, I'm not saying Pearson isn't honest, I'm not saying anybody is, or they are, or they're not.
Well, that's, that's why we're bringing it to you, because quite honestly, when somebody climbs the top of that scaffolding, whether they're going to cut a bad piece of wood out and replace it, or they're going to just throw some spackling in it and paint over it, you have no control. Even if they bid it for wood replacement, we're not gonna be able to see what they actually do, so that's why I'm kinda falling back on saying, Pearson is reputable, we know where they live, they're not gonna screw with us, but it is, it's, you know...
I need to, I need to point out, too, this is a park project. It's not a building or a house, it's a park project.
It's San Antonio.
Okay, all right.
And other, other commissioners, other board members, finance committee members, you have any other thought?
I would just like to say that I, I agree that, that it's all right in this case... this case to let Pearson do this project because of the trust and I think the onerous is really going to fall on our staff to make sure that if there is question on whether a piece of, uh, whether molding, uh, siding, anything needs to be changed, the onerous is going to fall on them. They're going to have to quote-unquote, "bird dog" the project to make sure that the, uh, that the project is getting done properly and, uh, that's where the real onerous is going to fall. And I hate to put that, hang that stone around somebody's neck, but, um, they'll have to pay attention to what's being done so that spackle isn't put in, so that wood is being replaced and, and that it's being done properly. But there is, while it's not an emergency project, this is the painting season and it would be nice to get that done in fair weather, so.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Hickman. I would like to say, I'd like to see Pearson continue with it. It's their job. They've done the windows, they, they see what's there. Um, if, if it was my house, I would just continue with it. That would be my thought. So all we need to do is give permission to Todd to continue or is there something more we need to bring from the board?
No, that would be sufficient, Commissioner, just to, to let Todd move forward.
Okay, do we, may we have a motion? What? A motion?
Don't move.
I'll support.
Harrison said, yeah, move along, Todd.
Okay, those are all in favor, it passes. Thank you. Something else?
I'm sorry, did we have support on that? I, Commissioner Harrison made the motion.
I supported. Hickman.
Okay.
Harrison and Harrison. All those in favor, can you tie my eye?
Now, may I have the roll call? Mamie?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Yarborough?
I say yes.
Commissioner Harrison?
Yes.
Commissioner Hickman?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
No.
Motion passes. Next?
Okay, so now we're going to go into your minutes approval, please. Uh, this will be for the minutes of May 14th. You'll, I need a motion by Commissioner Portman.
Commissioner Harrison moves approval limit.
Okay.
A support.
Commissioner Scott supports.
Thank you. Any questions, corrections? Would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Yarborough?
Yes.
Commissioner Harrison?
Yes.
Commissioner Hickman?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Thank you.
And, uh, Sherifferson, I already checked the public comments. I do not have any public comments from anyone, so I believe that is all in your business.
Good, and so now we should go to the next page for Zoom?
Uh, for the, yes, we'll leave it during this meeting and then we're going to have to go over some of the board commissioners meeting, which will be in a very short amount of time.
Uh, commissioners, any, anything else you want to say? This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.